Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, November the 7th, 2023. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaf. Public comments can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaf.org. They may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting and all comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Carlos Chavera, who is a veteran and served this country proudly, followed by an invocation by Sean Pfeifer. He will join us, please.
Please join me in the flag salute. Right hand over hearts. Salute.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our dear Lord, we come to you because we know you are ultimately in charge of all things. We thank you for our city. We pray for unity at this meeting. And where there is disagreement, that there would be discernment and peace. Pray that the meeting would be efficient and effective. And I ask that you would bless all who serve the city of Taft. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Sean. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
And Councilmember Chavera.
Here. Okay, first item on this evening's agenda is sister request, public comments. Comments are to be received as stated in the above policy. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comments and set them out for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to five minutes. Now then, Gary Summers wishes to comment. I believe it's on topic number nine. So should Gary come up and address the council? Or do we want to wait and pull mine off the agenda?
I would let him address now instead of having to pull it.
Okay, all right. Gary, if you would, please, sir.
Thank you very much, council members. I appreciate you tolerating us tonight. We are looking forward this weekend to Veterans Day. As we all know, that's a very important part of our lineage here in Taft and most of the, a lot of veterans around here. We're hoping to draw a good number of our local veterans to the parade, if not participating in and at least enjoying and visiting with us. So we're looking forward to getting the permit to go ahead with our parade. We're pretty excited. It's a building parade. I'm sure that it's, we're not going to be competing with Bakersfield, but we will eventually grow from each year. So I appreciate your concern and your support. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Gary. And you and the entire group is working so hard on the post and it's such a success and the new face it has taken on. You guys have done a stellar job. So thank you for your service and thank you for your service here in town. All right, next up, item number two, council statements, non-action. Councilman Waldrop, I'll begin with you, sir.
I'd like to give a report, update on the lady that grew up here in Taft and wrote a book. Name, I knew her as Hazel Baron. But she using her middle name and married last name is Ann Haskins. She wrote a book named Ten Lost Children. And I now have a bunch of these books in my store. So if anybody's interested, they can come in on a $25 donation and get one. And we're putting everybody's name down. She wants to get ahold of all the purchasers. And when she does make it for a book signing, she wants to make sure everybody makes it. So that's what I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Councilman Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, we're probably going to talk a little bit, and I'll leave that to you, about the Veterans Day celebration. But I wanted to send out a special thanks to the staff here at City Hall. They've made that a wonderful annual tradition. I know Michelle Kincaid has kind of taken that on the shoulders every year. And Mr. Mayor, I know that's been a pet project of yours. So to everybody who's involved, especially those who really have seen it from start to finish and helped it grow, thank you. It's a wonderful thing. I really look forward to a very large and appreciative crowd on Saturday morning. And to the post, Friday, I apologize, Friday.
Much going on Saturday.
There is, there is. To the post, I know a couple of times I've heard folks say, you know, we should have a Veterans Day parade. And it's amazing to see that finally get off the ground. And Gary, I appreciate you guys being humble and said, hey, it's a growing parade. It's a building parade. But you know what? Everything has to start somewhere. And I look forward to one day that rivaling, you know, people when they go to the Bakersfield Veterans Day parade. And good for them. If that's where you're going to go celebrate, that's where you can go celebrate, do it. But I can't wait to see that thing grow here in the city of TAF. So thank you, gentlemen, for all that hard work. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Chavera.
Yes, thank you. So I just want to quickly discuss Assembly Bill 101. Essentially, on October 8th, 2021, the state passed this bill requiring mandatory for high school students, in order to graduate, they have to pass an ethnic studies class. And clearly, there was a lot of contention and controversy for the last couple of years. And now it's come, now it's come to where by 2025, students will have to be taking this class. But it's important to know that we, as community members, get to play a role in the actual curriculum. So we've been talking a lot about it at the high school level, and we've been taking current training on it. So I would just, just let you guys know as the community that, again, that you have a role and that I would look out for the information coming through the high schools that where they will be having meetings, so you can come and attend and come and have a conversation about what you expect, what ethnic studies is not and what it is. And again, you get to play a role in your local youth education. And we should see that fairly soon and within the next few weeks. In addition, I would like to talk about the Ruwan family, a soldier. I'm sure the mayor will talk about that here shortly. But essentially, the Ruwan family is a local Taft High graduate, was in the United States Army serving, and unfortunately, he suffered an injury that eventually took his life. The last few two years, they were able to perform some local fundraisers. Where now they will be unveiling a sign in his name off of 119, okay? So on November 17th, they will be unveiling this. They'll be having a ceremony here as well at the memorial park?
Actually, we'll be parking there, yes. And then, and there will be a Caltrans right away. They're actually going to do traffic control. And so the shoulder will be available for the service and the unveiling of the sign. That is correct.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a young man who paid the ultimate sacrifice. And this is exactly what we're talking about as a country and as a community. This gentleman, this young man deserves, deserves the honor. We need to attend. If we can't attend, I completely understand. But we, as a community, need to come together and support this young man and his family and show our appreciation as community members for the sacrifice that he made. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That's quite a bit. Mayor Protem Cryer.
Thank you, Mayor. You can tell that everybody on this council here appreciates our veterans. 100% we even have a veteran here on a die. And as a community, I'd like to challenge the veterans to come be members of Post 63 American Legion. I'd like to challenge the community to sign up as honorary post members and sign up and just, if anything, help support economically the post, but yet come and enjoy the camaraderie among our veterans and among ourselves to talk about things and be social. That would be great, you know, if we just show this month of November how much we care and buy the membership $20, $40. Not much at all, but the whole year I'll be to enjoy the camaraderie of being with our veterans and stuff and talking. There's a lot of things happening this weekend, you know? I know the Post 63 has put up a lot of different events going on. I know the city of TAF is putting on a Veterans Celebration with our mayor, David Nor. He's always so gracious, he puts up a big flag out there with Hellswing Crane for the public, it's beautiful what he does. And as our city, we promote our veterans. You know, show, especially on, come on Friday, come and be part of it. Enjoy it and see our veterans. That goes back to very few left in World War II, but most of the only members we have are in the starts of the Korean War. And that's even drilling. And come and talk with them and be part of our community and socialize and everything. And I just want to express that, that we're a patriotic city. And to be able to have a sign out front there, TAF, is like the county is, you know, we like our veterans. We do the same thing. Our city loves our veterans out there, to our city. But that's all I wanted to say about on that because it is a great part of our community. And another thing too is there's lots going on, a lot of things happening in our city. That's good. Getting ready for the holiday season coming up. We're all going shopping, Christmas shopping, got Thanksgiving coming. Watch out for the traffic, getting a little bit of rain, watch out for the fog, and watch out for the other driver when you drive. You know, you gotta watch out because there's a lot of people there that don't know what side of the road you need to be on. And but watch out what gets you by how you leave in your car. They don't be taken away by somebody else that thinks they can get more than you do. But we just need to be cognizant of everything in our surroundings. But enjoy our Veterans Day this weekend and for the month of November. And that's all I have to say, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Well, if you don't mind, I'm gonna hold that up so people can, people can see that. So I'll hold that up so the camera can see that. This is our Veterans Day Celebration and BBQ. It's going to take place here at Veterans Memorial Park on Friday at 10:00 AM. And like you say, Michelle works so hard and she has these wonderful challenge coins that we plan on handing out, and it's something we truly look forward to each year. I think we should fly our flag every single day and we should show our appreciation for our veterans every single day. Not twice a year, not three times a year, every single day. We support our veterans, we appreciate our freedoms, and freedom comes with a cost. And there are those that will step up along with young Corporal Louis Ruwan. And we will celebrate with his family next Friday. Not this Friday, but next Friday at the unveiling of the sign to memorialize that section of highway in his name. So then we will have the parade, the first Veterans Day parade, like it's been talked about so many times. Downtown, baby, come on out there and be a part of it. We'll get some Chamber of Commerce weather out there. And let's all, let's all come together and say thank you and enjoy the city of TAF. I absolutely agree. So thank you all, look forward to seeing everybody at all of those events. Okay, that's all I have. Next up, we have department reports. I believe that we have Planning Commissioner who wants to deliver his report during department reports.
Yes. We did something unusual this month and we met yesterday, or last week. So I didn't want to wait too much longer before I'd probably forget what I wanted to say. The business of the planning commission is still continuing to deal with the housing element. Nothing there yet. I'm expecting it'll probably run into the first part, first of next quarter. We'll still have to go to the state for a review and comment and then come back. We also welcomed Ron Orin back to the commission dais. Glad to see he was there and participating fully. And that's the report for this month. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, sir. Do we have any other department reports this evening? We have a police chief coming up here to talk to us?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Pretty excited about this one. This is our statistics for the month of October. We had a total incidence of 1,167. That's 464 calls for service. With a whopping 703 officer initiated. So extremely proud of that number. Traffic stops were, we call them T-stops, at 51. Total officer cases written, 158. We had total misdemeanor and felony arrests of 65. 48 misdemeanor arrests and 17 felony arrests. And we had 44 citations issued in the month of October. So extremely happy, my, I don't say our troops are out doing their job and the guys and gals of the TAF Police Department, the city of TAF are working hard. I appreciate it.
And we appreciate it, guys and gals.
And as we know, and I won't comment much on it, but we had a pretty big arrest that took care of a lot of cases. So we're pretty ecstatic about that as well.
Thank you all for that. I was a bad guy doing a lot of bad things over a period of time.
Yes, he was.
All right. Thanks to your troops, thanks, sir. There's one thing I forgot to mention that's going to be going on. Like you say, so many things going on in this town. We're so, and we're going to have a very special guest in the community of Taft, Senator Shannon Grove. And there is going to be a dinner in her honor. Actually, a fundraiser is going to take place, and that's going to be Saturday night in the hangar over here by the airport. I do believe that there are still tickets available for that. And I think there's some information on the chamber's website regarding that event. Heaven knows that she's supported our community, our industry, our way of life. She is also a veteran. And I look forward to seeing her. I will be there. So all of you who want to attend, by all means, become a part of it. Do we have any other department reports this evening? Seeing none, next up, city manager's statement. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. No statement other than I will see you all Friday and Saturday.
All right, well, look forward to it, sir. Thank you. City Attorney's Statements, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No statement.
All right. Future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen?
Not here.
Hearing none? Okay, at this time, we'll consider the consent calendar items seven through 12. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? We already had, can you come comment on item number nine? Any others? Seeing none, those items are. Item number seven is the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of October the 17th. Item number eight is the payment of bills, a substantial amount of bills, over $1 million. Item number nine, approval of special event permit and encroachment permit for the fellows Post 63 American Legion to host a Veterans Day Parade on Center Street and Carr Show at Seventh and Center Streets on Saturday, November 11th, 2023. The recommendation is the motion to approve a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving Special Event Permit Number 2023-17, An Encroachment Permit For the Fellows Post 63 American Legion To Host A Veterans Day Parade On Center Street And Carr Show At Seventh And Kern Streets On Saturday, November 11th, 2023, And Find That The Activity Is Not A Project Per The California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) Set Forth In Section 15061B3 Of The SEQA Guidelines." Item number 10 is approval of street closures for the Christmas Parade on December 4th, 2023. That's right, Christmas right around the corner, everybody. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Of The City Council Of The City Of Taft Authorizing The Street Closures For The 2023 Christmas Parade, And Find That The Activity Is Not A Project Per The California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) Set Forth In Section 15060C3 And Section 15378 Of The SEQA Guidelines." Item number 11, "Accept The Completed Work By Birch Construction For The 10th Street Rehabilitation From A Street To The Crosswalk At The Bike Path, Pedestrian Path Project." Recommendation here is a motion to accept the completed work by Birch Construction for the road rehabilitation of 10th Street From A Street To The Crosswalk At The Bike Pedestrian Path. STPL 5193043 authorized the city clerk to file the notice of completion with Kern County Recorder. Staff further recommends the release of the 5% retention to the contractor after 30 days pending claims or liens filed during this period and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) Set Forth In Section 15061B3 Of The SEQA Guidelines. Lastly, item 12, KEIF Commissary Network Agreement. Recommendation is a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the KEIF Commissary Network Agreement and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) Set Forth In Section 15060C3 And Section 15378 Of The SEQA Guidelines. Does any council member wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
Not here.
Hearing none? At this time, I would consider a motion to approve consent calendar items seven through 12.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavera.
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes, thank you all. That's approved on a 5-0 vote. Next up, item number 13. Professional Services Agreement With Price Page &amp; Company For Financial Services. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past decade, the city finance department has struggled with staffing levels, including recruitment and retention difficulties. Finance department has been overburdened with priority day-to-day activities, including those that require in-depth financial reports to be completed by strict deadlines. As a necessity, staff is proposing entering into a professional service agreement with Price Page &amp; Company to focus on work outlined in the attached proposal. They would become an executive-level extension of the finance department, being able to assist in completing the city's needed audit reports and being a liaison between the city and our external auditors. The cost of the agreement is a do-not-exceed amount and is expected to be divided over fiscal years '23, '24, '24, '25. As in a comparison for costs, the city has been unable to fill vacant accounting positions for the past three years with a fully burdened cost estimate of $125,000 annually, not including future retirement liability. Contracting with this firm will allow the finance director to focus on immediate department necessities, including training and oversight of newly hired finance department employees. And this was heard by the finance committee today and it was moved for approval by the city council, by the finance committee.
Thank you. City Manager Jones, the recommended action is to approve a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the Price Page &amp; Company agreement and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) Set Forth In Sections 15060C3 And Section 15378 Of The SEQA Guidelines.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Councilman Bryant, you made the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the staff report is complete and it gives the full gamut of detail, not only in function, but in cost. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, sir. Mayor Protem, you made the second?
No comment.
No comment? All right, council members? Councilmember Chavera?
No comment.
No comment.
No comment? I'll make a comment. I too am a part of the finance committee and this was explained and discussed in great detail regarding the need and the fact that it came about because of an unmet need in spite of a great deal of outreach trying to find the right qualified individual to be a part of our team. And unfortunately, these days in California, that is a problem that is shared by a great many municipalities as well as the private sector. So we had to reach out to supplement our staff to get things caught up in where they belong. So that's why it was forwarded to the entire city council from the finance director. So if there's no more discussion, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Protem Cryer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavera.
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes, that passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you all very much. That, ladies and gentlemen, concludes our open portion of this evening's meeting. This city council will be going into closed session for three items. Item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of section 54956.9D, one potential case. Item B, conference with labor negotiator Craig Jones. City manager, Government Code Section 54957.6, all units. Lastly, item C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Government Code Section 54956.9A, Taft Union High School versus the city of Taft. I want to thank you all for being a part of this evening's meeting and welcoming us into your living. into your living room, if you're watching us on TV. This is your government, be a part of it. See you all at the Veterans Day. God bless, City of Taft.